All right, the regular meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors, January ninth, 2019 is now called to order. Happy New Year to everyone. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Manser?
Here.
Mr. Oats?
Present.
Ms. Lewis? Mr. Fiero?
Here.
Ms. Morris? Try that again. Ms. Morris? She's here. She's right there. Mr. Evans?
Here.
Dr. Hartsfield?
Here.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Here.
Ms. Robinson?
Here.
Board Member Lewis requested an excused absence for the evening. If there is no objection, we would like to excuse our absence. Seeing none, Board Member Lewis's absence is excused. Uh, Board Member Asia Morris will be joining us by Skype. And is there any objection to approve tonight's agenda? Seeing no objection, the agenda is approved. Okay, we have our ad hoc committee presentations from our Communications and Community Engagement Committee.
Thank you, Chairwoman Robinson. Uh, we were prepared tonight to do a Communications and Community Engagement Plan rollout, but we're going to postpone that until next week. And I fully expect this many people to also be back, uh, not next week, but in two weeks, to hear that exciting plan. So I just want to welcome you guys all back. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for your, uh, work on pulling that together. We look forward to hearing that at the next meeting. For the MBEWEB policy, we recognize Dr. Bedell to present this proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, the board was presented, uh, several weeks ago, a document articulating the MBEWBE policy in response to the disparity study that took place, uh, several months ago. The administration at this time is asking the board to approve the recommendations put forth around setting MBEWBE goals.
It would now be in order to have a motion to approve this proposal?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? I do have one. Linda, can you join us or Dr. Bedell about the MBEWBE? Erin, okay, thank you. Can you just, one, I would like to commend the administration for pulling this together for the MBEWBE policy and participating in the disparity study. Because we had the option to do that. We utilized funds to be able to investigate, to see if there was a disparity. A disparity was found. Can you go over what those goals are?
Yes, I can go over those goals. For the, uh, MBE goal, the minority business was nine point eight, and the women's business enterprise is eight point five for a total eighteen point three percent of our total spend.
So very much again, um, this has been a long time coming, and I definitely want to applaud. And the goals that we set were from, directly from the disparity studies. We did not come in and come lower. Um, and this is a true testament to our courage in this area and to our stewardship over the dollars and our response to the community.
And if I, if I could, Madam Chair, um, just for the community's consumption, we made, we were very intentional, especially with the Lincoln Middle project. Um, it resulted in a tremendous amount of burden on our staff, but we basically broke down every single individual project so that we would ensure that our MBE and WBE vendors would have an opportunity to do, to, to do some of the projects. In the past, we generally would have it all lumped under one group, and, um, it really did not allow for some of our businesses, business owners, small business owners, to be able to have an opportunity. That's a big reason why we're seeing the numbers increase. Uh, but we simply believe as a district too that, you know, as the, as all of you as taxpayers feed into this school district, we have to also make sure that we're doing the same thing across this city as we look at contracts and conducting business with, with everybody.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Evans?
Here. When I go to meet a, a site and I don't see any minorities, who's monitoring to make sure that that takes place, Dr. Bedell?
I mean, that's, that's, that's our staff. And, um, Macaulay Gordon, for this particular project, but that's, that's our staff. But right now, Macaulay and Gordon is the team. And when we entered into an agreement for them to oversee this project, we specifically, um, said that we wanted to make sure that we were being very intentional with MBE and WBE. And every time that we presented to the board an update, we have always included with, especially with this Lincoln Middle project, the percent of MBE and WBE that are participating and provided that to the board and the community with their, with the update.
But, but let's just make sure, provide the clarity. Um, this is not, there are, there are no workforce goals in this policy, or is there workforce goals? Because when you say you're monitoring the project, you're monitoring how many MBEWBEs are working.
Vendors.
Where, this, this policy is about the subcontractors. Does it have primes?
Prime and subcontractors.
Primes and subs. And so these are the people that we're in contract with, not the people that are actually on the site working. We do not have a monitoring program or setup, um, and there are no workforce goals in this policy. So I just want to make sure that we delineated the two so that everyone was clear on what, what the policy actually does and is. All right, okay. Um, is there any other discussion? The motion is to, um, approve and adopt the board policy changes for policy compliance policies DJDA, um, in regards to our MBEWBE, um, goals.
Uh, so moved.
Okay, we already, we, we did that, but I just wanted to repeat the motion. Will the Secretary call a roll?
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Fiero?
Yes.
Ms. Morris? Ms. Evans, or Mr. Evans, pardon me. Sorry, Mr. Evans.
I gotta get past that one. Yes.
Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes, there is a majority in favor in the proposed policy changes that are approved. For the item of Lincoln Field contract approval, the Chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present this proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For asking the board to take action on this, I know last board meeting, um, we, or two board meetings ago, we had an opportunity to engage with the community, and we brought this forth around completing this capital project, uh, to turn the Lincoln Athletic Field from a practice field into a competition field. Our board members caught a mistake, and that mistake was conducted by administration. And I've always, as I've stated, been a superintendent that will always own up to mistakes. There was misinformation in a document about a year ago that when we presented to the board originally, we were able to clear that up. What I shared with the board was that we don't ever want to do anything where our board's not being informed. It, it wasn't an issue of not having the money. The issue was more around the fact that we didn't come back to the board and update them that, hey, we have additional funds to move this to a competition field. We received additional money from outside sources, an NFL grant, money from Charles Harris, but we didn't update the board. And I think for everybody that's sitting in here, what you would want out of your board is for them to be able to catch you and almost be a fail-safe, uh, uh, board because ultimately, we don't want to make the same mistakes over and over and over. Now, I will tell you, after speaking with each of the board members, we could have brought this back to the last board meeting, and we could have moved forward, and we would have received the vote. I intentionally pulled it because we wanted to make sure that the issues that were brought to our attention by Board Member Hartsfield and other board members, that those issues were going to be addressed. We have a system in place that moving forward, any of these type of capital projects, that something like this will not happen. And so I do want to publicly thank our board for bringing some of those concerns to our attention. But we also, at this point, want to be able to move forward now that we've been able to have the dialogue about what happened, and ask the board to move forward with accepting the administration's recommendation, um, to approve the LCBA Athletic Field renovation in the amount of three million, three hundred fifty-nine thousand, six hundred five dollars.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Yes. Board Member Oats?
Just brought this up, uh, I'd emailed back in December when this first came up. But, um, when we did the original discussion around this contract in November, it was to pass this in November in order to allow for an August first start date for, um, the fall sport teams. With us now approving this in January, how's that schedule impacted? And if it bleeds into maybe the early practice season for those, what accommodations have we made with the team so that they can still get their practice?
Yeah, we, um, have been in conversation with the coach about their home schedule. Unfortunately, they're not going to have very many home games on their new field next year. Um, but they, of course, are early in the season. We expect to be ready for first game. If we aren't ready, um, for first practice, we'll make sure they have great practice accommodations elsewhere.
And practice season starts like early August?
August 12th, so we should be okay.
So we anticipate being done with the field by August 12th?
I'm hoping so, yes.
Board Member Fiero?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to thank Dr. Bedell for providing that, uh, explanation. And I want to thank the parents, the community, and more importantly, the students. Uh, you all came before us last month. And, um, you know, just, just for myself, I, I, I would say to you, it was very difficult, uh, not being able to approve at that point, uh, the field. Uh, you know, the students, uh, came forward and said, you know, we go to school. We're making the grades. Uh, we're, we're one of the only teams in the city not to be able to host a football, uh, game. And so I just want to say, you know, thank you. And, and, and never, um, never stop holding, uh, us accountable. But also at the same time, no, based upon the explanation that Dr. Bedell provided, it was never an issue of, well, you don't deserve the field. Uh, we should give it to someone else. We'll take the money and do something else. It, it was never, that was never the issue. Uh, but I appreciate your patience. And again, just want to thank all of you because you came down here and, and, and made some strong points that, uh, I don't think there's anything that e- either of you had said from the students, to the parents, to former, uh, alumni, that I could say, well, no, I don't think that's right. I mean, you were right on in your messaging. So again, thank you for your patience with us. And, uh, I look forward to, to coming and, and watching a game and, and seeing the young men, uh, win the championship because certainly the academically, you guys are champions already, and you know that. So thank you, parents.
Board Member Wolfsee?
I also want to just commend Dr. Bedell and his staff. This was, um, you know, a situation where I don't think the public quite understood, and now you do, what was going on. But I will tell you, it's a testament to the relationship that this board has built with this administration and the cabinet, that we can have these difficult, um, kind of discussions and, uh, votes, but we end up where we need to be. So you, um, I do like, uh, my board colleague Fiero, thank you for playing your part in this role, in this, uh, process as well because it was as important as the roles that we played. So thank you.
Board Member Hartsfield?
Uh, I would also like to thank parents and all of our stakeholders, students, for coming out. I just hope that you're never put in a position for lack of information to make a presentation. You are our present and our future, but I think we owe it to you that you always have total information so that you know that whenever you speak, you are speaking from that and are never disadvantaged by being misinformed.
Um, my comment and the reason why I strongly support this is this administration has decentralized our tracks, uh, I'm sorry, our field operations, um, from former administrations. Everyone was, we, we said that we were going to go to the IL field, and this administration came in and said, every high school deserves its own field. And I, this is an issue of parity, and this is an issue of making sure that we have pride in all of our, uh, at all of our high schools and all of our kids deserve an opportunity to play, um, on their own turf. And so I appreciate the huge, the humongous, um, leap that we made from, again, decentralizing our sports to one area. Um, and then not only that, but looking for outside contributors because we knew that we couldn't do this alone. But we've gotten several NFL grants for multiple stadiums, um, that we have. And so I just applaud because our central city deserves to have pride and bring pride back into our athletics, and this is something that does that. All right, um, again, the motion is to approve the Lincoln Field contracts. We, we do have a, a second, and so will the Secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Fiero?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes, there is a majority in favor, and the Lincoln Field contracts are approved. All right, now we will roll up our sleeves and go through our workshop presentation. The Chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present our board monitoring, four point three, point, four point four financial stability review.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know as people are exiting out, um, Ms. Quinley, we will just give them a few minutes, but, um, we're looking forward to... All right, at this time, uh, we'll have Ms. Linda Quinley, who will conduct our monitoring report on four point three, um, financial condition and activity, and then four point four, financial planning and budgeting.
Good evening, Board Chair Robinson, Board Members, Dr. Bedell, and, and those who are remaining with us this evening. Um, we're happy to be here, showing you, um, let me catch up here a little bit. Looks, there we go. Sharing with you the annual review of our monitoring updates on four point three and four point four, which stem around financial condition and activity as well as planning and budgeting. A great timely conversation as we get ready to springboard the budget season for next year. And we've just completed the audit that you received a month or so ago. So we'll start with board policy four point three. The superintendent shall neither cause nor allow the development of fiscal jeopardy or a material deviation of actual expenditures from board priorities as established in the ends, in, in our board policy. We've established some KPIs, some key performance indicators, to help us track and measure that we are in fact meeting this board policy. And we want to walk through a few of those and then talk about actual actions and activities that it takes. In the state, in the state of Missouri and in all school districts, one of the primary known manners to assess the fiscal stability and integrity of a school district is through review of fund balance. So we're going to look at a couple different takes on that and talk about why we're looking at that. That first set of numbers that you see before you is the combined fund balance. And we've put in parentheses what those are. We do have several fund balances. Incidental and teachers. Incidental is the fund that pays non-instructional salaries and benefits, like myself and teams that I work with as non-educators in the system. Also buys supplies and materials, pays the utilities, those kinds of things. The teachers' fund pays teacher salaries and benefits and other certified staff like principals. Local capital, federal grants and local grants. Federal grants being largely, um, IDEA, special education, and the title funding programs. And then child nutrition services, which stands on its own. It's our expectation and our, um, our good fortune that we do in fact have a child nutrition services department that really does self-sustain and self, self-cover their expenditures. When we combine all of those funds together and look at what we call combined fund balance, you see that four-year trend, a little up and down, but an average of twenty-eight point two-five percent overall. A strong fund balance, when you consider the fact that when you're looking at grants, you would sort of expect those year-end balances to be low because you have the expenditure and the revenues that largely match, right? And so those wouldn't have supporting fund balances necessarily. So we have a fairly consistent and positive trend and a good overall average there. Then the second set of numbers is looking at just those two funds that are largely about what does it take day-to-day to operate the district outside of other people's money? So the resources that the board, um, receives and, and allocates for us to spend. And you see again, a very consistent trend there with an average over four years of thirty-five and a half percent. That does, it appears to be a strong fund balance, and it is. Some would say, wow, that's a lot for a public school system in, in those two standalone funds. And in most systems, it actually would be. As you well know, we have good reason to have good fund balance because of how our cash flow management works with low receipts from the state in those July through December months, with the bulk of our revenues coming in January and February after people have paid their property taxes. And so that's one reason that, that we have those. It's also one of the things that gave us comfort and confidence in requesting last year when you approved this year's budget to spend into those reserves a little bit, at one point five million dollars, if you recall. And then in the fall, felt very comfortable with the fact that, um, we had a need to replace some devices that hadn't been necessarily planned and an additional two million dollars. That's the kind of resources that allow you to be flexible when those kinds of needs are identified. Okay, so the next set of key performance indicators. We have a lot of conversation around, um, debt and bonding capacities for the district. You have a four-year trend here of what is allowable debt capacity, outstanding debt, and remaining available to issue. So let's just kind of walk through those columns and look at what they are. The allowable capacity is the amount of debt that under the Missouri statute and required calculation, this board has the ability to go engage, whether it's asking voters through a general obligation bond or some other method. The middle column shows you at the end of each of those fiscal years the amount of outstanding debt on the books at that point in time. And then available, of course, is the difference between those two number, showing that we have a high availability for debt issuance. Important to note that in most districts, you will find that outstanding to be general obligation bonds. In our case, um, it was nineteen sixty-six when the Board of Education went last to the voters for approval of a general obligation bond. So our debt, as you are very familiar, relate to operating leases around an energy lease from 2010 and the certificates of participation from 2016 to do projects like the athletic fields and many other things. So an important note on how our debt is structured currently. What I see when I look at this, um, putting my former banker hat on, is really strong debt structure. So if you look at that outstanding column and you go backwards from sixteen to seventeen, you can see that's the year we issued that sixty million dollars. We went from forty-four to a hundred and two. And then this last year, we went from a hundred and two to ninety-seven, showing that we really are impacting principal. We've made a significant principal reduction in a year where there, where there was not new debt issued, showing that we are on a path to appropriately and timely repay that debt. The second set of information on this slide is about what we refer to as our credit rating, the ICR, issuer credit rating. We do use Standard and Poor's. Standard and Poor's and Moody's are the two primary rating agencies for public municipal organizations. You only receive a credit rating at the time of issuing debt in our line of work. So the last time we issued debt was July of sixteen, under the certificates of participation, and we received an A-plus stable rating, which is one step improvement from the last time we issued debt in 2010. And we had a lot of conversation around why that improvement probably happened. And if you look at the timing and remember the difficult decisions that, that the then Board of Education, which some of you may have been a part of, needed to make in that two thousand nine, two thousand ten period to assure efficiencies and sustainability of our system, that likely played a great role in the reason that that rating increased the next time debt was issued. Important to note when you look at that, that triple A is the best rating you can get. And I've been in situations where, oh, we need to go to that top-notch of triple A, which I say to you, only, the only thing you can do from there is lose rating, which you don't really want to brag about. So I don't know that that's really your target. But, um, one of the things that, important to think about triple A and why we might not be there because we are pretty solid financially, is the type of debt we've issued. When your issuance, um, is, relies on the operating budget for repayment versus a tax levy the voters have authorized specifically for debt, it's more susceptible to economic change. If a sales valuation goes down like it did in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, there could be worry of our ability to repay and meet those payments. And so that likely is one of the reasons we wouldn't be at the highest possible. Then financial, um, and A thirty-one federal program audits. You did just receive the audit report in November of this year. So you're pretty familiar and pretty current on this. You see a great trend here of zero findings or a small number of compliance findings. No, um, material weaknesses, none of those kinds of things that cause harm or alarm or concern around management day-to-day. And as you know, those compliance findings are fairly minor in nature. So again, another good external indicator of the strength and stability of the system. And MBEWBE that, um, we just discussed as well. You can see here, it's one of the measures that we want to track as a key performance indicator, looking again at our trend. And I've had a lot of conversation with Ms. Thompson about this as we really are, you know, committed to doing what we can for the organization, the community behind this. You see the note on the six, the June thirty-two, twenty eighteen school year, where we dipped from the previous year down to eleven-five-five. And that was because we had fewer construction contracts on the books. And Erin's experience, having been here a long time, and based on what you know with our recent Lincoln contracts, is that's one of the greatest opportunities that we have locally to really hit those targets. So that is, um, something that we want to be conscious of as we try to make sure we have good goals going forward. Cash and investment balances as of December thirty-first. Why look at December thirty-first? That's a question a lot of people have when June thirtieth is the fiscal year end for all public schools. DESI, um, looks at this number, um, from a fund balance perspective because it's your typical low watermark for cash and your ability to know that you're making it through the school year. We talked about earlier in the year, July, August, September, October, November, we have fewer cash receipts because we get that big influx of cash after our property taxes are paid. We have a, um, a strong reliance on local property tax revenues. So that's a really, um, important thing for us to look at. You see again, a fairly consistent trend, a drop from fifteen to sixteen, then two years consistent, and then our current December thirty-first numbers, which, thank you to Erin's team, are hot off the press since we just got back to work on Monday and they had to close out December and get some things done. It is a decrease this year. The largest impact on that is the fact that our December twenty eighteen property tax collections were a little over ten million dollars less than last year at this point in time. That's a result of a couple of things probably. One being people just paying a little later. Maybe they paid in December instead of November, so we'll get them in January instead of December. It could be property taxes paid under appeal that might be a couple of months until we actually receive those. So we're watching that really closely, anxious to see what our January collections are and expecting they might be higher than normal because December was lower than normal. Then we, we also know that we have reduced state funding in those earlier months and other activity that hasn't had an impact on that. But still, if you think about that we're at our low watermark, very strong investment balances for December thirty-first. So what do we do to monitor and assure that we're hitting the right numbers on these KPIs? Really, in good internal process, internal control, it's something that in our line of work, you know, we are just constantly focused on. So some of the ways that we do that here at Kansas City Public Schools, high reliance on the administrative policy as written and drafted for us by Missouri School Boards Association, and practicing good regular routines and procedures around bidding, purchasing, and expenditures. That's one of the best things we can do to make sure these things happen. Regular contract review. Kansas City Public Schools has a strong contract review process. Um, it's, it's really a good one. Approval process and then monitoring process. Those are, it's pretty strong for us. Use of a good financial information system with approval hierarchies and security roles. We intentionally set up, um, to assure separation of duties. So if I am the person who enters a purchase request, I can't... So if I am the person who enters a purchase request, I can't also be that approver because we need that separate set of eyes that make sure someone else is looking. So our system is set up to not allow that happen. And someone else has to approve, has appropriate authority over that budget, and when it gets to a certain mark of dollars, then Ms. Thompson's seeing it at a certain mark, I'm seeing it, so that we make sure multiple sets of eyes are on anything before it finally goes out. Using that annual external audit, the financial data and the compliance information lets us test ourselves and check ourselves and know where we need to be. And then we really are open to those continued outside resources who might provide us information. Council Great City Schools audit that was completed before I came, but was one of the first things I was handed and said, you need to read this and make sure that these are things we're considering. So we've used that well in this district and will continue to. Special area experts and then industry experts doing internal review on our behalf. So who else out there is an expert in this area that might come help us look at ourselves? And we have some partners that we are doing that kind of work with as well. Then additionally, measuring through good practice, the stability piece. Investment of funds for all school districts has pretty clear and fairly stringent regulations, and we follow those closely. If we didn't, you would know that in that audit report. It would be a compliance finding in the audit report. Depository review and competitive bid process to make sure that our funds are placed in a safe place with appropriate collateral that meets state guidelines and earns the best possible yield for the system. Knowing what's going on in the community and economic factors at the state and local level and being able to adapt to those, like assessed valuation moves, state law changes that impact required spend mandated, unfunded mandated programs. We talk about that a lot in public education. And then just making sure that we're considering that the impact of our financial recommendations and requests to the board long-term on both our bond rating and our fund balance and managing those. Meeting our debt service payments on time. The ladies do a nice job making sure that happens and gets done. And then tracking those reserve balances and talking with you about the impact of your current decisions on what the district will have in reserve balances years down the road. And as we get back to that, I want to note too, that the consideration of the financial impact, that's just another example of that 2009, 2010 action that the board took. They took, made those difficult decisions to make sure that we sit here today in the kind of position that we do. Questions on 4.3?
Board member Manther?
A couple of questions. Can you remind me on the assessed valuation, is there, there's a period or a cycle of time at which there's a complete review of that? And can you just remind me a little bit of that, when that time period occurs? And if this decline of the $10 million from where we might have been a year ago, if that's in any way related to that?
That's a great question. The reassessment period, I think is what you're referring to, is every other year. 2017, so the 1718 year was a reassessment year, 2018 is off. So you wouldn't expect as large of an increase in the current year. And then 1920 will be reassessment again. The only thing that makes me think it might have an impact this year is the fact that if you recall from when we set our tax rate in August, we talked about that unexpected decrease in commercial value this year because of some successful appeals from our commercial property owners last year. And so that may have had a little bit of an impact, but it's certainly just more likely to be that people are dragging and spent more early in December for Christmas, and so they're saving their tax money for later.
And in the appeal process, just to help me on that piece again, do we have a voice in that appeal process, or is that handled wholly by the county?
Dr. Bedell and myself and some others of staff just met recently with the board's representatives to the Board of Appeal. We do have two gentlemen that sit on that Board of Appeal. They don't get a final vote. They have the opportunity to have voice and hopefully impact with the county folks who do have a vote. But at the end of the day, that decision is in the hand of largely the county.
Board member Wolsey?
Thank you. I have two questions. So on this, with the percentage of combined fund balance, and I know we keep a higher than most others, but a comparison, since you know a lot of other, what would be like a Springfield or Columbia, Missouri?
Springfield actually has a very low. If we look down below to operating, which is the more typical number that you'll see, Springfield is about 17%. I personally would be a little nervous and uncomfortable in that situation because of our cash flow obligations. It wouldn't be something that would be sustainable for us. Columbia sits around 27%. Again, they get much larger monthly payments from the state, like three or four million dollars compared to $300,000 a month. And so that has an impact as well. But those, you'll see it in the range between 17 and 30 more typically.
So you mentioned that part of the reason we carry the larger is that cash flow from when we receive the property? But there is another component to why we keep it high. If I remember from the School Board School presentation, is it also not because our, we're covering ourselves essentially because we don't get the state dollars that we, that get taken out from, for the charters?
Right. And that's really a more clear way of what I'm talking about. That state funding, since our state funding is reduced every month in order to pass both the local and state revenues to the charters, that has a significant impact on our cash flow and is exactly a reason we need these dollars.
Thank you. And then the other was just, you know, where you spoke about the fiscal integrity is the good internal process. Our financial information system, is that ALIO?
It is. We'd never.
And I remember you speaking about, are we at the point where we're fully using all the benefits that that has? Because I know that, I think that would have a positive impact.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that question. We are excitedly and begrudgingly both, just getting ready to head into, we have scheduled a reimplementation of the ALIO financial system. Because as is typical when you go into a new system, you know, you take on what you can at that point in time. Implementations and conversions of systems are very difficult. And we do know that there are, in fact, a lot of other features of that product that we can utilize to become more systemic, less paper-driven, and some of those kinds of things. And so we're going to be working on that this winter.
Board member Oats?
Just quick follow-up on what you said, just a little bit to go around, that we have representatives on the county board, not necessarily vote. Is that typical for our school district?
The one that I can tell you for sure about, there's an actual school board vote at the table. That is locally determined.
Thank you.
Okay, so given our current condition with having to have, carry a higher operating fund balance, what would be the tipping point for us? You said you would be nervous at the Springfield level, but given our, what would, what would we need to stay at or above?
So we haven't calculated that, but it's one of the things that we want to do to talk to you about, what should that minimum be? And I'm going to, I'm going to ask Erin to kind of think what her gut tells her on that. I think if we get down to that 27% range, we're going to be pretty tight hitting, hitting, being able to pay everything and live life as normal those July through December months. So I would, I would say we want to stay in the operating fund balance at 30 or below, above, and 25 or above in combined. You think that's about?
Because remember, we used 16.3 million out of the reserves for the beginning?
Right. And that was a transfer that came up there.
Yeah, I was just going to comment that if it's up to Erin, we'd be at 40 or 50%.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we can't ask Erin. But, and that is, because, because we don't enjoy as a district, a debt service levy at this point in time. When we, when we do need to do things, you know, we rely on the fact that we have strong fund balances to help us do that. It's not dissimilar to what charter schools do because they, they don't have access to debt service levy. They can't go get one. And so when they want to do improvements or make major renovations, they too rely on having built up a fund balance to give them comfort to do that.
So as a part of the, our credit rating, is our market share or how many students we have or that we're losing or may lose, is that a indicator that helps to determine that?
It really is. When, sitting through a rating call, I think they're really fun. I don't know about most people, but I think a debt rating call is really a good time. But, but one of the things that you have to do is you have to talk about your historical trend, trend on student enrollment and your projections, and you have to defend those because student enrollment in the state of Missouri drives state revenue. And so if you are in a continued declining student enrollment position, you have to be expected to be in a declining revenue from the state. And so the raters care very much about that. So steadied enrollment and growing enrollment actually will positively impact your rating.
Okay. And my last question is about the CLP. In our increasing deferred maintenance, and that might come a little bit later in your presentation in terms of financial condition, but do we anticipate having to issue more debt to keep up with the need of, and I know it's a 40%?
Well, I think it's a great question. We absolutely have a significant amount of deferred maintenance, somewhere between $400 and $500 million of deferred maintenance in the system that needs to be addressed. I'm sure Erin and I will be on the same page with this position. Continuing to issue debt relying on the operating budget to repay it is not something we're going to be comfortable with. If we're going to attack that $400 to $500 million, it should be through a general obligation bond election.
Okay. Thank you. We have a second part?
Do we agree on that, Erin? Just checking. Dr. Bedell as well. Okay. So 4.4. Financial planning or budgeting for any fiscal year or part thereof shall not deviate materially from the ends, priorities, or risk financial jeopardy, and shall be derived from a multi-year plan. And we've been having some conversation about this, but let's look at some key performance indicators first again, and then we'll talk about the actual steps and processes that we use. Annual operating, those two, the incidental and teacher, the grants, budgets, and child nutrition services, when we look at this historical trend of revenue over expenditures, you see we have been annually putting money into reserves. 9.2 million last year, and those are, again, reserves across those various funds, so not all the operating. 3.9% of total expenditures last year ended up back in reserves, and those expenditures were roughly $237 million. So you see that we've not been spending more than we've been bringing in, which is a definite positive. But we know as a public school, it's also not our goal to be putting money in the bank that could be put into buildings and into classrooms and into education of our kids. So this is an area we want to continue to work and try to figure out how to get more spot-on with those budgets and try to hit a target of somewhere in that 1.5% going back. By state statute, we can never spend more than the board has authorized. So we always have to come in better than the budget indicated, right? So we ask you to spend $1.4 million in reserves right out of the bat. If we came in at a break-even year, we would feel really spot-on to our expectations. So we, we've been a little high in previous years as to what's gone on, gone on reserves, but it should be a solid and reassuring thing for our community that this, this board and this district is not spending a lot more than they're bringing in. Then when you look at year-to-date cumulative revenues and expenditures, again, we're looking at December, which seems kind of odd, but is an important component of where we are. You see those numbers for revenues. Again, you do see that December of 18 is down. And expenditures, those expenditures being pretty solid and pretty steady, which is a really good sign that in a growing system, from the expectation that utilities go up every year and the costs of benefits go up, and we certainly want to afford our employees the opportunity to have some annual reward and compensation that keeps them competitive in the market, the fact that those expenditures this time of the year have stayed steady is a really great sign, in my opinion. Revenues, we do expect revenues to lag in the first six months of the year and then be larger in the last half of the year. We think we're going to see that at a higher level than normal this year because of that lagging local property tax collection. So how do we make sure that we hit those KPIs and continue to be able to bring you numbers that show confidence and comfort in the system? A lot of these are a repeat to the 4.3 focus. But as you well know, having just had the system analysis report right before break, we are accumulating a lot of data, both financial data historically, comparison data, and then also integrating in this great student data that we've been pulling together. Using that information to create the tiered systems and be able to focus again on those ends. Analyzing, projecting, actual financial information as compared to budget, it's our job to reevaluate and reset assumptions and look at how we are working in our, inside our budget, make sure we're trying to be, you know, as spot-on as we can with those. Understand when we have variances, sometimes they happen for a reason. Sometimes they're going to repeat, sometimes they're not. So just really being in tune to our financials and knowing that. But really, one of the most difficult things in public education is being responsive, being aware of, so that you can be responsive to legislative change. Because we know we're not that industry that gets to set our prices because costs went up, we don't charge anything. And so when someone else basically sets our prices for us through legislative actions, we have to adapt and be able to move on. And then really for us, the key component is monitoring that largest line of revenue, which is our local property taxes, being proactive and active in that work around assessment and reassessment. Additionally, monitoring those fund balances and bringing to you a plan that makes sure we can cash flow not just this year, but the next coming years thereafter, and working on that five-year model that we're going to work on together that makes sure that that is sustainable for us. And like I said, there's a lot of repeats. Knowing the implications of the recommendations we're bringing to you help us do that. We do also want to make sure we're looking at making sure we have appropriate amounts of money for emergency funds. An example I like to give on this, having experienced it, is when you live in a large district that is tightly compacted, if, you know, in Missouri, we get tornadoes. We get terrible wind and hail. You get a bad wind and hail that rips through town one afternoon, we could have 10 buildings that need significant roof work on them. So we want to make sure that we have the deductions, we have the deductibles and those kinds of things in place to make sure that we're able to meet those with our adequate funding. So meeting the ends, using our student achievement data to determine our focus. And we're doing that more and more. It's a great partnership to work with the deputy superintendent and chief human resources officer around making sure we are doing that. Using our comparative data to determine how our focus should look, and then using zero-based budgeting to look at ourselves internally. We just really rolled that out at a higher level last year, and I think it was, you know, we got a good start, but, but we're going to do it again, and we're going to do it again, and we're going to do it again. And people are really going to learn and know what they're spending. And, you know, we've had one meeting already. Dr. Shepherd led us in a meeting on Monday where we talked about that we have to decide what are our greatest priorities. And sometimes you can't afford to just come to the board and ask for more, so we need to find it ourselves internally first. So we're going to continue that work through that kind of thing and then doing contract reviews and making sure that those are appropriate and sustainable and bring the value that we expect from them. So fiscal integrity is sustained through continued and expanded work around compliance with best practice. We're doing that through these external groups that we let come in and evaluate us and take their feedback. Gathering, analyzing, and using that financial data and that comparison data, comparing it alongside students, being transparent and inclusive in the budget process, being aware and being an advocate for public education legislation because it has a big impact on our ability to sustain and meet our obligations. Using the five-year model and determining what those fund balance targets should be. So these are kind of the key things that we think will continue to allow us to direct resources and achieve that consistent academic improvement, meet the ends, and get all of our kids where they need to be.
So one of the things you talked about was where we were putting sort of more money back in the bank, so to speak, than you would ideally like. And part of that, I believe what you're saying too, is with this new budgeting process, where we introduced the zero-based budgeting and rolling that out throughout the district at every building level, that, that approach was also framed from also the equity policy and expectations. And so can you just kind of tie some of that together for me in terms of, as you were introducing a new approach with building leaders, you were also having their, you were basing some decisions in partnership with building leaders around how to achieve equity and educational needs and results within their buildings. And so do you think that they were too conservative in their estimations at this point in time? Or is it, was it just the learning process?
So that was the 1718 year, and we'll see the results of that first effort this time next year. time next year. But what I expect we'll see, and I think your, your point is a good one, when you first enter into some of this, everyone's going to hold back, right? Everyone's afraid they're going, you know, "I'm going to take your money and you're never going to get it back again." We have to get to a point where we trust, it's so common in public education and probably a lot of agency kind of environments, we have to get to a point where we trust that if I give this back because it's needed now at, at a tier-three building who has greater need. If I'm a tier-one and I give this back now, but I need it, I trust that my administration's going to help me get there. And so that's what we're going to have to accomplish with them. And I think we did. And part of the hard work that Dr. Shepherd did last year with principals around that conversation was saying, "We know your title money is here and we know it's in place. Let's talk about how you've been spending it and let's put it behind math interventionists and reading interventionists and some of those key things." And that way, we didn't have to come into the operating budget and ask for additions to that because our federal grant budget was helping to cover that. So continuing to kind of massage that this year, we'll have a little better answer for you next year, I think, after we actually get some numbers back. Board Member Oats?
Thanks again. I always love these presentations.
Good.
So kind of, I guess, following up off of what Ms. Manther said, so 2017 was the reevaluation year. We anticipated an increase in 2018, but what we saw was actually a decrease. And that's despite a pretty good economy, near full employment, all these economic indicators that you would imagine. So I, you know, just that, you know, with that reality coupled with the fact that we don't really have a vote on appeals and we don't even have a vote on other threats to income sources such as abatements and TIPS. How does that, it sounds like it's a very tough task to plan out where you're going to land, and so maybe that's why historically we...
Absolutely, it is.
...were shooting 5% or something like that was just, it doesn't feel like we have much control over any of our revenue sources, to be honest.
Yeah, and that's my lens from having been in for-profit sectors and in public education is, we have to manage expenditures at a much higher level than a typical business because we don't control revenue. And we don't control revenue. And so that, it is a harder target to hit, there is no doubt about it. And all of the things that you mentioned have an impact on that. And I was surprised a year ago, I said, "We really need to know what TIPS roll-off the books when so that we can plan those new revenues into our stream at a more reliable rate." And I was surprised to find out at the county that there's nothing available to us that lets us do that. And so there, we did get an Excel file that lists them all, but their assessed valuation, their expected roll-off dates and that were incomplete. So we're going to have to try to create that ourselves, and frankly, having the time to do those kinds of things is difficult for us. So the lack of control has a huge impact.
Yeah, and I guess with that, with the commercial, what kind of led the decrease this year, and, you know, the over-reliance, I guess, on residential property taxes doesn't feel sustainable long-term, and so...
And I think, important to remember that about this time last year, this Board of Directors did approve for us to partner with all of the other charter schools in the area, and then the surrounding districts also stepped up, and we helped the county in make a one-time investment in a complete review of commercial properties. And 100% of those properties are being reassessed right now for next year. That project is moving as they had promised. I have a meeting with them later this month to see what those numbers are going to look like for us. And, but one of the things that I think is really key about that is, what I saw in some of the appeals on property tax bills were that they would bring in the bill of the neighbor who hadn't been reassessed and their bill, and they'd say, "We share a wall. How come I went up 18% and they went up 1%?" And the Board of Appeals didn't feel like they had good, strong reason to not listen to their appeal. Reevaluating everyone at one time, putting them all on the same playing field should make it easier for the Board of Appeals to work a little more in our favor, we're hoping. Board Member Evans?
Madam Chair, I want to apologize for digressing, but I could not, Linda, get my mind off of 4.3, page 5, where it had 88 million and a loss of 10 million due to less taxes, I'm assuming, receipts. When I look at that, that's a substantial amount of money to lose. And I didn't quite understand, could part of that 10 million be for a lack of enrollment, people moving elsewhere? Or is that something totally different?
That is something totally different. The assessed valuation is merely based on the value of properties regardless of student or family counts. So it's more likely, it does have a little bit to do that as Mr. Oats mentioned, we know we went backwards in assessed valuation by 0.24% this year rather than forward, largely around commercial appeals and those kinds of things. We believe and will know in the next couple of months that largely this is just people didn't go pay their taxes as early. And so the way the county does that is if I pay my taxes the first two weeks of November, then the district gets it at the end of November. If I pay it on December 24th, the district doesn't get it until January. So we're expecting to see higher January collections, and this number would catch up. We will certainly report to you if that's not what happens because that will be significant. Erin will be very nervous.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Anything more? If that's all, all right. Thank you. Dr. Bedell, can you present our items for our January 23rd business meeting, please?
We have at this time, one item that we're asking the board to take action on, January 23rd. It's our transportation bids and contract approval for the 2019-20 school year.
If there's no other business to come before the board, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.